Oh, that's good to know for reporting and progress.
Continue. I pushed my continue button. Yes, there we go. And whatever I say, yeah, okay. So again, I'll call the meeting to order. And actually, what we wanted to do, this will give Supervisor Begay a chance to potentially hop in before we get into the budget items is we need to move item 13 up. I believe we're going to need to continue that item, but let's, that is the public hearing and discussion and possible action regarding the rescinding of the ordinance 2021-02, the wildfire defense ordinance. And, and for that, Steve, did you want to start or I'm going right to Lucinda on this one?
Mr. Chair, actually, we're going to postpone that. I have not been able to connect on the date certain on that. So at this point in time, I do not see Lucinda on the call. So we'll just continue that. I'll attempt to reach her and get back to you momentarily, but let's just go ahead and set that aside for now.
Okay. Another item we have is discussing a possible action, item number 14. It's a presentation and update on various fires. We will not be doing that because we have the meeting now that the type one teams here, the opportunity for the public meeting to interface with the type one team and we can get that update that way. For the sake of, again, you know, associated with the fire, in case anybody saw that were attending with that, once you get a type one team that comes in, it's, they kind of have cart block control, which is really good. They're good at what they do. They get in here, but they're the ones that are controlling the incident and managing it. It's a, it's a battle that they work their way through. So later on, we can provide the information associated with that. So the next item of business, I'll go ahead and go to the call to the public and see if there's anybody on the meeting that wishes to bring an item to our attention that is not part of our agenda. This is a courtesy that the board offers. Doesn't mean we need to provide the opportunity. So we, we ask for courtesy and yet we know people have varied opinions and they, they would like to bring forward items that may not be on our agenda. So with that, Lindsay, can you explain how they would access that?
And Chair Ryan, did you want to do the pledge of allegiance beforehand?
I can do that. I'm sorry. Yeah, I skipped, I skipped over that one. I apologize. Let's, let's go ahead and do that pledge of allegiance as we do with each of our meetings, which is very important. If you please join me and rise and join me and face to the east if you don't have a flag. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you for reminding me there, Patrice. Go ahead, Lindsay. You were going to, let's go back to the calls to the public. Lindsay?
Thank you, Chair Ryan. If you are in the meeting and you would like to make a comment, there is a raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen and you can click on that icon and we'll see your hand raised. And then we can go ahead and call on you. And at this time, I don't see anyone on that's on the phone, so we don't need to explain the phone.
Okay. And I'm not seeing anybody as panelist. Are you or as attendees, Lindsay?
No, not at this time. There are no raised hands and there are no comments in the board comments email.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and close that portion of the call to the public. But we do have public hearings that we will be going through for various budgets that we have. The next item of business that we have is a public hearing and consideration and possible action to approve the truth in taxation of the Coconino County primary property tax rate and levy increase in property taxes for, I'll let, I'll let Siri go ahead and go through the presentation associated with this.
Thank you, Chair Ryan. And we can certainly pull up the presentation in your pocket if you would prefer. This is the same information that was presented for the tentative adoption for the budget a couple of weeks ago and as disinformation sharing to the public, it is the result of many weeks of meetings with the board in terms of discussing the budget and making decisions. And so today is more the formality of adopting the budget in some cases, but it is the result of many discussions. And the budget that will be presented before we go into all the individual discussions is, is really essentially a FY21 budget continuation with the change for a 3% market increase for staff. And then flexibility to have continued adjustments related to the American Rescue Plan Act, we might refer to as ARPA. And then some of those budget requests that came in, more information has been shared by Treasury about the use of ARPA. And so we will have important work to do in the fall then to allocate dollars and look at the whole picture. As we look then at the next steps, that's, that is really what's next today is the final adoption for the budget that will load for each department, giving them their available funds on July 1st. And then the board has the ability to make adjustments by reallocating from our placeholder or our contingency money right now into the departmental budgets. So the, we have a series of items that are, are public hearings and through taxation hearings. And with those, they do require a roll call vote by the members of the board. Every district that has a property tax for the county is, is listed here with a truth and taxation hearing. So again, just for the benefit of all of the board members, this is the result of a formula increase. So when we think about property taxes, there are two components. One is the rate that's being charged and the second is the value of our properties. And so when our property values increase, and even if there's no other change, no change to the rate, the taxes collected would be higher and that represents it then, it triggers a truth and taxation hearing. But we'll go through the specifics of each one. The first one before you today is to hold a public hearing and consider action to approve the truth and taxation for the Coconino County primary tax rate and levy increase in property taxes for a total primary property tax levy of $10,274,633. And it's important to note that last, our current year that we are in, our tax rate was .5293. And the recommendation here is to assess our maximum allowable rate, representing a 2% increase in taxes, but an actual decrease in our tax rate to .5180 per $100 of a net assessed value. So it's a decrease in the rate, but again, the second side of the equation is the values. So with that, I will pause for the public hearing.
Okay. And, and just before we step into the public hearing associated with this, we, I'm seeing Judy out in the the audience, the attendees. And so we want to try and raise her to be a panelist.
Chair Ryan, since she's on the, joined by phone, we can't make her a panelist, but she is able to talk. So she's able to unmute herself and do the vote.
Okay. Just a real quick pause for the sake of the board. We've been through hearings on this. And there's an understanding of a budget that we put together, but we'll pause for a half a second. Are there any questions? Before I open the public hearing?
No.
Nope. Seeing no questions, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for the the truth and taxation associated with the final budget adoption. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this? Lindsay, again, each time, because we can get somebody that comes into the meeting later, could you explain the process for a public hearing?
Yes, there's a, a raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. And if you click on that raise hand icon, it will raise the hand so that we can see it next to your name. And then we will go ahead and allow you to talk if you'd like to make a comment.
Okay, I'll just give that a second. Since we're functioning at electronic, I'm not seeing anybody that wishes to comment. How about you, Lindsay?
No, at this time, there's nobody with a raised hand.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and I need a motion to approve the, let's see, the action that associated with the truth in taxation, the Coconino County property tax and levy increase to the property tax in the sum that Siri had read earlier. Supervisor Horstman.
Yes, with the recommendation of the county staff, I hereby move that we approve the truth in taxation, primary tax rate and levy increase in property taxes for a total primary property tax levy of $10,274,633.
I need a second.
Second.
I have a second by Vice Chair Fowler. Okay, this is a roll call vote. And so I need to turn to the clerk of the board and Lindsay, if you can conduct a roll call vote. For those that will be voting, vote aye in favor.
Lindsay, you're muted.
Thank, thank you. I'll go ahead and just go by district. If you could just give me your vote. District one Supervisor Horstman.
Aye.
District two Supervisor Vasquez.
Aye.
District three Chair Ryan.
Aye.
District four Supervisor Begay. And I'm going to go ahead and ask Supervisor Begay to unmute and she's unmuted.
Aye.
Thank you. And District five.
Aye.
And then District five Supervisor Fowler.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. So the motion carries unanimously. Okay, next item is item number two. It's a public hearing and consideration and possible action to adopt resolution 2021-28, which is approving the fiscal year 2022 final budget for Coconino County. And I'll turn to Siri Malaney to present on this. Siri?
Thank you, Chair Ryan and members of the board. So our next item is another public hearing for consideration and possible action to adopt a resolution approving our budget for next year. As noted a few minutes ago, again, it's, it's the culmination of all of our budget discussions and it does represent a continuation of both the fiscal year 21 budget with again additions and flexibility to allocate dollars associated with American Rescue Plan Act funding and other federal funding related to COVID response or federal initiatives that could potentially be coming during the fiscal year.
All right. Any questions or comments from the board? Not seeing any. So next item here would be, this is a public hearing, so I need to open the public hearing. Lindsay, please explain the process.
Thank you. If you would like to make a comment on this item, go ahead and raise your hand through the raise hand icon below and we will see a hand raised and call on you.
Okay. Not seeing any. How about you, Lindsay?
No, not at this time.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board and I'll consider a motion associated with our budget here.
I may.
Supervisor Horstman?
With the understanding that this is increasing capacity in order to meet the needs for ARPA and for other grants, I hereby make a motion to adopt resolution 2021-28 approving the fiscal year 2022 final budget for Coconino County in the amount of $276,633,204.
All right, I have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
I think it's that.
All right, I have a second from Vice Chair Fowler and I have a third from Supervisor Begay. Any comments? I'll just make a, a quick comment and if the board members, you know, if you want to, we'll follow up. Again, as noted, we, we did a lot of work on this. This is, this is a tight budget. We do have additional fund capability if we get the ARPA funding, which we already addressed, we'll come back and review it in public meetings associated with it. For the sake of all staff that worked on it, really appreciate all the work that you did with it. It's a lot of difficult decisions. There are greater needs that are out there to help address all the issues that we have or to provide services on behalf of our citizens. So I think it's an appropriate budget and therefore I will be voting on it. Would anybody else want to comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Yes, I just, I want to acknowledge the staff that, I want to just acknowledge their hard work. During the pandemic, they continued to work on this budget and continued to provide the services that was needed. And even though they may be working from home, they were able to all get together and be able to come up with a budget that the board can consider. And it was very difficult times, but they were able to carry out their, you know, their job and presenting the, the budget to, to the board. And I just want to acknowledge this, how hard they worked and, and the other electeds as well. It is difficult to have challenges at home and challenges in the community and, and yet be able to carry out your duty like this. So I just want to acknowledge all of them and just thank them for their hard work and their commitment and dedication to our communities, to our, to, to the residents of Coconino County. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair. Supervisor Horstman?
Yes, and just very briefly, I agree with everything what Supervisor Fowler indicated. A big thank you to the staff and the hard work of our wonderful county workers. So also just point out, this is a conservative budget. It is an extension of a very lean budget from fiscal year 2021. It does provide for a 3% increase for the staff and for all the reasons that have already been stated, it is important that we recognize them with this increase. And they didn't get one last year, so I am very pleased that we were able to do so. And I'm going to support this budget for 2022.
All right. Supervisor Vasquez?
Sure. I just wanted to thank everybody who contributed to the process. This wasn't, this, this budget wasn't taken lightly and, you know, the, we had all, all the hearings that we went through and it was a long drawn out process and contributions by everybody. So thank you to everyone who contributed to the process and I'm looking forward to approving this budget and moving forward and excited for the staff to get their, their raises that they, that they deserve.
All right. And Supervisor Bigay?
I disagree with everybody that, all the comments that were made. Everyone, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Bigay. So with that, I'll call for the vote on favor of the motion. Vote aye.
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 Aye. Isn't it a roll call?
Aye.
Not, not for the final budget, system majority. Every time we have truth in taxation or a roll call, but you guys get better, keep me on, keep me on track that way. So I, because we have a lot of them, we're, we're going through this way.
We are. Okay.
And so I, all right. So now we have a unanimous vote on approval of the budget there. And so the next item that we have is item number three. It's a public hearing and consideration of possible action to adopt the fiscal year 2022 final budget for the fire district assistance tax, otherwise called by acronym FDAT. Siri?
Thank you, Chair Ryan and members of the board. As a reminder from last time, the fire district assistance tax is a statutory requirement for counties. It levies a tax of a rate not to exceed 10 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. And then it is distributed back out to the fire districts within the county according to a statutory formula. And so the recommendation for the fiscal year 2022 final budget for the fire district assistance tax is the amount of $1,983,520.
Right. And it's formulaic as we had heard before. So with that, actually, I'll, I'll go ahead and step right into the public hearing associated with this. Lindsay, can you explain the process?
Yes, thank you. If you would like to make a public comment on this item, please hit the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen so we can see your hand raised. And then we will go ahead and allow you to speak. At this time, Chair Ryan, I don't see any hands raised for, from the public.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back for a vote by the board. Anybody care to make a motion here?
Mr. Chair, I move that we, that would the board approve as recommended by its staff, the FY 2022 final budget for the fire district assistance tax in the amount of $1,809,350.
I'm ready. I'm going to change your note.
Okay, I think I'm mixing my numbers again.
Yes.
I'm really bad with, with my numbers, as you all can see. Okay, somebody else has to say the numbers.
Siri, Siri, you say the number.
I'm always mixing numbers.
In the amount of $1,983,520.
All right. So I have a motion and I need a second to that. And it looks like, okay Supervisor Vasquez with a second on that. All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
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 Any opposed, not opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item, we need to resolve as the Coconino County Flood Control District Board of Directors. I need a motion to do so.
So move.
Oh, there you go. I have a motion by Supervisor Horstman, a second by Vice Chair Fowler, even though she was quicker than Supervisor Horstman there. All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
All right, we're acting in the capacity of the Flood Control District Board of Directors. Siri?
Thank you, Chair Ryan and members of the board. And again, this is another truth in taxation hearing. It will require a roll call vote and the recommendation from staff is to consider possible action regarding the adoption of the truth in taxation for the Coconino County Flood Control District secondary tax rate and levy increase in property taxes for a total secondary property tax levy of $4,703,677. This one does represent a change in the rate. The current fiscal year rate is .2280 and the recommendation is to change the rate to .2620. And there are members of Public Works available if the board has any questions.
Okay, do we have questions by the board? Not seeing any questions. The first item that I would turn to is the public hearing. Open the public hearing. I know there's redundancy, but just in case for the sake of public process. Lindsay, please explain the process.
Thank you. If you'd like to make a public comment on this item, please click on the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen and we will allow you to speak.
I'm not seeing anybody. Lindsay?
No, at this time, there are no hands raised.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and I'll bring it back for a motion. First, we need a motion and then we'll do a roll call vote. Okay, I have Supervisor Horstman raising her hand. Go ahead.
And I think what's going on right now in our community gives us a reason as to why we do need a slight increase in this. And it is, therefore, I am making a motion regarding the adoption of the truth in taxation for the Coconino County Flood Control District secondary tax rate and levy increase in property taxes for a total secondary property tax levy of $4,703,677.
I have a motion by Supervisor Horstman. I need a second.
I'll second.
I have a second by Supervisor Vasquez. Any comment? Not seeing comment. I'll go ahead and call for the roll call vote. So I turn to the clerk of the board. Lindsay, if you could proceed, please vote aye if you're in favor.
Thank you. District one Supervisor Horstman?
Aye.
District two Supervisor Vasquez?
Aye.
District three Chair Ryan?
Aye.
District four Supervisor Begay?
Aye.
And District five Vice Chair Fowler?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you, Lindsay. Okay, next item is the public hearing and consideration of possible action to adopt the fiscal year 2022 final budget for the Coconino County Flood Control District. Siri?
Thank you, Chair Ryan and members of the board. And the next item is a staff recommendation to consider the adoption of the fiscal year 2022 final budget for the Coconino County Flood Control District in the amount of $4,858,405.
Okay, and Siri, in addition to this, an explanation of, we do need a unanimous vote of the board of supervisors?
Um, thank you, Chair. Actually, that was on the truth and taxation. So this one is a typical budget adoption that can be done by.
Okay, I misunderstood that one. Well, good. We got the unanimous vote of the board in that last vote. Fantastic. Okay, next. So we don't need that explanation. Does the board have any questions? Not see, Supervisor Horstman?
This is not a question. It's just a comment. And that is that what this will allow us to, to do is to establish a budget that has a no funding gap. It's a modest increase, but it would allow the Flood Control District to build emergency reserves. We know that the funding from the museum fire and the transfer museum flood response and mitigation efforts really, in fact, reduced that emergency reserve. And this will give us an opportunity to build that up, to prepare for emergencies and the eventualities emergencies to come. So I strongly support this. And I would be happy to make a motion to adopt.
So before we go for the motion, we have to do the hearing.
No problem.
Okay. Other, yeah, go ahead, Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, yes, this is such an important, in, it was necessary to increase this particular item. And because all of the communities also shared this funding, so it is such an important. The flood district is so important. There's just not enough money to be able to resolve a lot of issues that are taking place. We have fires and after the fires, the floods come and there's prevention of fires that also take place. So we need to make sure that we are able to help our communities as well as trying to make sure that we respond to emergencies when they happen. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Other board members? I'll just go ahead and note that, again, you know, our Flood Control District is proactive, very innovative. Forest health is a large component. And then, you know, the, the succeeding flooding that we suffer from impact of has been critical as we've progressed and developed this process and how we budget associated with it. Not enough to do the work that needs to be done, but definitely needs the fortification that we have here on that. So I'll go ahead and turn to the public hearing and Lindsay, if you can explain the process?
Thank you. If you'd like to make a comment on this item, please hit the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen so that we can see your hand raised and then we will call and allow you to speak.
Okay, I'm not seeing any Lindsay yourself.
At this time, there are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, Supervisor Horstman, you wanted to make a motion?
Yes, I'll be happy to do that. I would.
Director, I should call you director. Sorry.
That's right. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2022 final budget for the. That's right. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2022 final budget for the Coconino County Flood Control District in the amount of four million, eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and five dollars.
I have a motion by Director Horstman, a second by Director Vasquez. Any further comment? No further comment. All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
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 Any opposed, not opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, now we need to resolve as the board of supervisors.
So move.
Motion by Vice Chair Fowler. Need a second.
Second.
Second by Director Horstman. All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we need to resolve it. All right, now we need to resolve as the Jail District Board of Directors. I need a motion to do so.
I move that we resolve as the Jail District Board of Directors.
Motion by Vice Chair Fowler. Need a second. Second by Supervisor Horstman. All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
Okay, next, I'm going to turn to Siri.
Thank you, Chair Ryan and members of the board. Our next item is a recommendation from staff to adopt the fiscal year 2022 final budget for the Coconino County Jail District in the amount of twenty-three million, two hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and three dollars.
All right, any questions from the board on that? Not seeing any questions, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Lindsay?
Thank you, Chair Ryan. If you'd like to make a comment on this item, please hit the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen so we can go ahead and allow you to speak.
So I'm going to do that each time, so we collected in the public record. Lindsay did that. I'm not seeing any public out there, I'm not seeing any hands raised, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for consideration of a motion. Vice Chair Fowler, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, and I have it written down in front of me here, so I can go. If it's written down, I'm much better, I think. So I like to move that we, as board, approve the FY two two twenty-two final budget of the Coconino County Jail District in the amount of twenty-three million, two hundred and eight and seven hundred and three.
All right, that's twenty-three million, two hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and three dollars. Read correctly. All right, very good. I need a second.
Second.
Second from District Two Director Vasquez. All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
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 All right, any opposed, not opposed, motion carries unanimously.
I'm pretty cross-eyed tonight.
We're not done yet here. Okay.
Tonight, I'm, I'm cross-eyed.
We need to resolve as the board of supervisors. I need a motion to do so.
I move that we resolve as the board of supervisors.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Fowler.
Second.
Second by Director Horstman. All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
Now we need to resolve. All right, and that's a very good unanimous decision. Now we need to resolve as the Public Health District Board of Directors.
So move.
Motion by Vice Chair Fowler.
Second.
I'll give the second to Supervisor Vasquez.
Absolutely.
All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
All right, we're acting in the capacity of the Public Health District Board of Directors, and I believe we have truth in taxation item with this. Siri?
Thank you, Chair Ryan and members of the board. This is another public hearing and possible action to approve the truth in taxation of the Coconino County Public Health Services District secondary tax rate and levy increase in property taxes of four million, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. This is another area where the tax rate is remaining stable, so we assess the rate of twenty-five cents for our current tax year, and the recommendation for next year is to keep the rate at twenty-five cents. However, the district did have an increase overall in assessed values, and so the truth in taxation hearing is required. This will also be a roll call vote.
Okay, thank you, Siri. Questions of the board? Not seeing any questions, I'll open the public hearing. Lindsay?
If you'd like to make a comment on this item, please hit the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen so we can see your hand raised, and we will allow you to speak.
Okay, and again, I'm looking at everybody in attendance, and I'm not seeing a hand raised. Lindsay, you neither?
Not, not at this time.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for a motion. Who would like to make a motion on the truth in taxation?
She'd be happy to, if you'd like.
Please, if you will. In this case, Director Horst.
Thank you very much, and just with noting again that the tax rate is remaining the same for the extensive work that's done by Public Health Service District. I hereby make the motion to approve the truth in taxation of the Coconino County Public Health Service District secondary tax rate and levy increase in property tax levy of four million, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars.
I have a motion by Director Horstman. I need a second.
Second.
I have a second by Vice Chair Fowler. Any comments? Seeing their comments, I'll call the question. Oh, no, that'll be a roll call vote. That'll be Lindsay. Lindsay?
Thank you, Chair Ryan. Director Horstman?
Aye.
Director Vasquez?
Aye, sorry.
Director Ryan?
Aye.
Director Begay? Director Begay, you just want to hit unmute?
Aye.
Thank you. And Director Fowler?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, so we continue with the Health District, and we move on to item eight. It's public hearing, consideration of possible action to adopt the fiscal year 2022 final budget for the Coconino County Public Health Services District. Siri?
Thank you, Chair Ryan and members of the board. Our next item is a recommendation from staff to adopt the fiscal year 2022 final budget for the Coconino County Public Health Services District in the amount of eleven million, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars.
All right, so any questions? I'm not seeing questions, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and Lindsay?
Thank you. If you'd like to make a comment on this item, please hit the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen, and then we will allow you to speak.
All right, and again, I'm not seeing public out there, and I'm not seeing raised hands. Lindsay?
No, there are no raised hands at this time.
Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for a motion. Public Health Services District. Looks like Coronimo raised his hand, and Vice Chair Fowler, which one are you guys?
I'll ask for a motion to accept this is the Health District, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so is that enough, or do I need to add more to the motion?
Well, we can add to it. It's for a total amount of eleven million, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars. Is that what you have in your motion?
Yes, I have in my motion to approve eleven million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars for the Health District.
That's seven hundred and fifty-six thousand.
Seven hundred and fifty-six, nine hundred and nine thousand. Yes, thank you.
Nine hundred and nine dollars. So Siri, read the number off.
The recommendation is the Coconino County Public Health Services District budget in the amount of eleven million, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars.
And that, that is your motion, Supervisor?
That's my motion.
All right.
Like me.
Do I have a second?
I will second the motion.
I have a second by Vice Chair Fowler. All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
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 All right, motion carries unanimously. Next, next, we need to, that finishes the Health District, so we need to resolve as the board of supervisors. I need a motion to do so. Motion by Vice Chair Fowler, second by?
Second.
By Director Horstman. All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
Now we need to resolve as the Coconino County Library District Board of Directors.
I move that we resolve as the Library District Board of Directors.
A second.
Motion by Vice Chair Fowler, second by Supervisor Vasquez. All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
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 Okay, we're ready. All right, fantastic unanimous vote. We're now acting in the capacity of the Library District Board of Directors. It's item nine, which is also a truth in taxation hearing. I'll turn to Siri.
Thank you, Chair Ryan and members of the board. Our next item is a consideration of possible action to adopt the truth in taxation for the Coconino County Library District secondary tax rate and levy increase in property taxes of five million, sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And again, this is our final truth in taxation hearing. The current rate is point two-five-five-six, and the recommendation is to keep the same rate for fiscal year 2022, resulting in a tax increase due to that increased assessed values within the library district. It will require a roll call vote.
Okay, so I now will open the public hearing. Lindsay?
Thank you. If you'd like to make a comment on this item, please hit the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen, and then we will go ahead and allow you to speak.
All right, aye.
Chair Ryan, there's no hands raised.
Okay, nor do I see any. So I'll close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back to the board for a motion. Looks like.
Aye.
Yeah, go ahead, Vice Chair Fowler.
Let me do, okay. I move that we adopt, or we adopt the truth and taxation for the Coconino Library District secondary tax rate and levy increase in property tax in the amount of five million, sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven.
Got it.
Well done. I have a motion, but we need to make sure we have a second out there.
A second.
Second by Director Vasquez. So we now need to go through a roll call vote. I turn it over to the clerk of the board.
Thank you. Director Horstman?
Aye.
Director Vasquez?
Aye.
Director Ryan?
Aye.
Director Begay?
Aye.
And Director Fowler?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right, next item is a public hearing, considering the possible action to adopt fiscal year 2022 final budget for the Coconino County Library District, and I'll turn it to Siri.
Thank you, Chair Ryan and members of the board. The staff recommendation is for the board to adopt the fiscal year 2022 final budget for the Coconino County Library District in the amount of five million, ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Any questions in the board? Not seeing any. I'll open the public hearing. Lindsay?
Thank you, Chair Ryan. If you'd like to make a comment on this item, anyone in attendance can raise their hand by clicking the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen, and then we will call on you to speak.
I'm not seeing anybody. Lindsay, are you?
No, there's no hands raised at this time.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for a motion. Looks like Director Horstman.
Yes, hi. I would make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2022 final budget for the Coconino County Library District in the amount of five million, ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars.
I have a motion by Director Horstman. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Fowler. All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
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 All right, motion carries unanimously. Okay, next, we have to resolve as the board of supervisors.
So move.
Motion by Supervisor or Vice Chair Fowler. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Director Vasquez. All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
Okay, next item is we need to resolve as the Toho-Tolani County Improvement District Board of Directors. I need a motion to do so.
So move.
Motion by Supervisor Horstman, second by Director, or by Vice Chair Fowler. All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
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 We're now acting in the capacity of Toho-Tolani County Improvement District. Siri?
Thank you, Chair Ryan and members of the board. This is a recommendation for consideration and possible action to adopt the fiscal year 2022 final budget for the Toho-Tolani County Improvement District in the amount of zero dollars. This was one of our road assessment districts that all of the, all of the parcels have fully paid. There are no outstanding special assessments, but the district has not yet been dissolved due to some outstanding collections related to litigation. And so we are required to adopt a budget for the district during any time in which it's active, and that is why the recommendation is for a zero-dollar budget. Thank you.
All right, any questions? You have questions? I'll turn to the public hearing. Lindsay?
Thank you. If you'd like to make a comment on this item, please hit the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen, and then we will allow you to speak.
All right, and I am not seeing any. Are you, Lindsay?
No, there are no hands raised.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for a motion. You can read this one. This is an easy one. Go ahead, Vice Chair Fowler.
That we approve the 2022 final budget of the Tohoney Lake County Improvement District in the amount of zero dollars.
Okay, that's the Toho-Tolani County Improvement District. All right, very good. I have a motion by Vice Chair Fowler. I need a second. Okay, I have a second. There you go. I have a second by Director Vasquez. All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
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 All right, unanimous decision there. I need a motion to resolve as the board of supervisors.
So move.
Motion by Vice Chair Fowler. Need a second.
Second.
Second by Director Horstman. All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
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 Now, all right, unanimous on that. Now I need a motion to resolve, I would probably go to Supervisor Horstman for, to resolve as the board of directors of the Tucson Special Street Lighting District.
I shall consider this item.
Please don't turn off the lights in Tucson.
We're not going to turn off the light, so I shall move.
Okay, motion by Supervisor Horstman. I need a second.
Second.
All right, second by Vice Chair Fowler. All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
We'll turn to Siri.
Aye.
All right, unanimous, very good. Siri?
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. Our final recommendation is for consideration and possible action to adopt the fiscal year 2022 final budget for the Tucson Special Lighting District in the amount of eleven thousand, four hundred dollars. This is a district formed by residents, and it is funded through special assessment of the district residents to pay the utility bill in the, within the district.
All right, I'm not seeing any questions, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Lindsay?
If you'd like to make a comment on this item, please hit the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen, and then we will allow you to speak.
All right, again, I'm not seeing public, and I'm not seeing raised hands. Lindsay?
No, there are no raised hands.
All right, I'll bring it back to the board, and I'll turn to Director Horstman. Would you like to make the motion here?
Yes, I would, and Tucson is near and dear to my heart and in District One. I would move that we adopt the fiscal year 2022 final budget for the Tucson Special Lighting District in the amount of eleven thousand, four hundred dollars.
I have a motion by Director Horstman, a second by Vice Chair Fowler. Any discussion? No discussion. Normally I would, but I have to move on to the other meeting. So all in favor of the motion, vote aye.
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 All right, we have a unanimous decision there. We approve that. So next, we need to resolve as the board of supervisors.
So move.
Motion by Vice Chair Fowler.
A second.
Second by Director Vasquez. All in favor of the motion? Second by Director Vasquez, all in favor of the motion, vote aye.
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 We're now, we're now acting in the capacity of, uh, we have a unanimous, thank you Judy. Uh, we're now acting in the capacity of, uh, the Board of Supervisors and I need to hop to the other meeting, I'm gonna turn it over to you Lena. And thank you everybody, well done.
Thank you.
Thank you Mister Chair and yes, well done, we went through our budget as, uh, nice and smoothly and, um, and I wanna turn to Steve to see if there's any other items because we have removed, uh, I believe two items. So, uh, I'm gonna turn to Steve.
Great, thank you Madam Vice Chair. Uh, that concludes the items from staff to the board this evening. I do want to just say one thing that, what do finance directors do when the final budget is adopted? They go on vacation, so Siri, have a good time off, thank you very much.
Well deserved. Okay, are there any other discussions for this evening? I think we have gone through all the items and we will adjourn our meeting, we have other meetings at six o'clock, so thank you so much and
Thank you guys, Chair, thank you all.
Facebook, yes, thank you.
Thank you.